Purchase. Um, okay, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, January 18th. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ah. Um, all right. Um, my report should be a very long one, kind of an update, and I feel like this probably be an ongoing thing for a little bit. Um, uh, the vaccines are now available in South Carolina for 65 and older, and that's a, that's a moving right direction. I'm not sure why South Carolina is so far behind North Carolina. They've been doing it for about a month. But, uh, the number of cases is down. We have, the cases, the deaths are gonna lag behind the cases, and we've had a number of deaths in Dillon County, and that's, that's sad. Uh, but we're, we're moving in the right direction, and there, there are a number of people that are out there vaccinated. If you, if you have COVID, probably gotta wait about three months before you get a vaccination. If you need it honestly, you have immunity, that's probably pretty good, at least for that three-month period of time. But you can get a, an exaggerated response to the vaccine if you get that too early. I got a call today from, um, Randy Brown at Purdue. He's the, he's been, Randy's been moved up to a regional person. I mean, he's been there as the, the chief person in charge of Dillon for about 12 years, maybe. Just a great guy. He's always answering the call when we ask for things. Great, just a great guy. But he's, he says they're gonna be, there's gonna be somebody that's gonna be taking over his position here as he continues to oversee a lot of the East Coast, uh, uh, operation. Uh, however, he, he did say that they were closing the grain bin in Hayman. He said he didn't think more than four, five people weren't there. This is by no means a, a show of weakness by Purdue. They were only buying about 3% of their grain from their own people, so it, it became a, it just became not very profitable. They are still, uh, using about 1.9 million gallons a day from our, uh, well, we process 1.9 million gallons a day from the sewage treatment plant. Didn't we guarantee them 2.4, Glenn? We were initially at 2.8, we moved to 2.4.
They gave us back, you remember, 300, 400, thousand a day?
Somewhere. 100,000, from 2.8 to 2.4.
Year, year.
And that was like 12, 12, 15 years ago. That might even be before Hardy came on. Um, but anyway, he, he understood it to be 2 million, and they've been bumping that pretty close, uh, over the last few days, over the last few weeks. They were hitting 1.9 million, 2 million, uh, most of last week. I told him that, he didn't need to worry about that, because I thought our, our, before we went forward, he looked it up, called me back, and, and I think that was with the, uh, with the war side of it, not suicide. But I mentioned to him the fact that we were, our long-term plan was to put something on that side of I-95 so that we wouldn't be pumping so much, uh, debris from Little Rock to Lakeview or to Little Peavy River. I told him that the, the transfer of that may save them up to 100,000 a year just in their pre-treatment. My understanding, and correct if I'm wrong, Harvey, a lot of the problem is, is the time that it takes to get it from Purdue to that lift station right there by the, uh, help, uh, by the Wellness Center.
Yes, sir.
And, and that allows it to accumulate. It's not ammonia, what is it? Hydrogen sulfide, which, um, you can probably spin about two or three seconds in it, and it would wipe your lungs out. It's, it's really toxic. So, they could save, they could save 100,000 a year. I'm just kind of hopefully setting up maybe some talk with them to, uh, as we go forward looking at our, our sewage, long-term sewage treatment plan. Um, I've, I've noticed in the newspaper, we're seeing some drug arrests, and, um, I think that is awesome. I don't know what our party is, whether it's, uh, uh, the county, whether it's us, but I think the people of Dillon know Dillon, city Dillon, county Dillon, know there are drugs out there. They know these people, and, uh, they're frustrated when they don't see arrests. So, I, I hope we're, we're helping in that, um, but, uh, they need to see arrests, I think. Our people need, and that, and it's on the front page, and, uh, I hope it doesn't affect anybody in the room, because it's everywhere, but, uh, we need to, we need to do what we can to, it, it helps them in the long run. Um, I talked with Clay Young, Lyndon Gordon, I haven't been out there, but they say that they just had a tremendous capital investor.
I've been.
Yeah. So, so that's good. Uh, I need from each, and I talked with Glenn about it before his, uh, uh, thing this week, and I'll just call it a thing because of HIPAA, but, um, we're glad he's good, but, uh, I need a report from each of y'all, kind of what we did last year. The paper wants a state of Dillon, and I'd like to include in that your, what you've done this year, uh, over the last 12 months, what your plans are for the next 12 months and long term. I hope I'm not out of, um, out of bounds in saying this. The golf course is doing well. We, we're, it, it is making more money. Yesterday, they had a tremendous show for their golf tournament. Um, a week or 10 days ago, Robert announced that he was going to give the golf course, uh, in some fashion to the city. Um, and, um, you know, that's, uh, that's, that's tremendous. That allows us to possibly apply, apply for grants. It'll save us $3,000, 2,500 or 3,000 a month on, on lease, leasing payment?
2,500.
2,500, so, talk about 30,000 if you're there. Uh, I noticed that Glenn had proposed, and we've talked about buying this land on the other side of the river. This would, I think, make it so that we would have both sides of the river with the land that he's already given us. An opportunity to possibly put some different things that I think Glenn's gonna talk about today, and possibly a path from the Wellness Center out to the golf course. So, just a, just a lot of good things happening at a, at a time when things could be worse. Anyway, that's, that's about me. I thought we tabled, you have to mention that we, I brought up briefly that our last council meeting, Lexington, Burks, and still continue having issues with the commercial front loader's garbage truck. Uh, that's the truck that goes around and picks up the big green dumpsters at different commercial businesses. And just sitting around that day prior to the council meeting, talking about issues with it, and what it was gonna cost to, to buy new ones, if you wanted to buy new ones, we got some quotes there anywhere from 260 to 275,000 dollars for one of those new trucks. But when we're looking at those numbers, I'm going, is it really worth us being in the commercial garbage business? What does it, what does it bring to us? We know the garbage business brings revenue to us, and we spend very little towards that, and it kind of offsets some of our costs in the general fund. So I had Janet pull some numbers, and I was surprisingly shocked what those numbers turned out to be. Um, so, you know, I was, I was preparing myself to come to you guys tonight and say, hey, let's get out of the commercial business, because, you know, we're mainly making 60,000 dollars a year, well, off of that one particular garbage. But as you see there, and this is based off the end of year of June 20th, June 2020, when you take the, what we spend in the commercial business, that's landfill costs, employee costs, fuel, et cetera, that we've got listed here, versus the revenue we bring in for 250 dumpsters, I don't think we need to get out of the commercial business when we're making 377,000 dollars. The only thing that I would add to that is maybe is part of the budget, um, putting in 50, 60,000 dollars a year to, in depreciation to replace it, because it is about every five to seven years that we have to replace it.
Somewhere in that ball.
And now, honestly, we, we need to get our, our new one fixed and put it on the back burner and buy a new one.
And, and we're working on getting some things. I think you still have hydraulic issue?
Yes, sir.
Um, we talked, we got, luckily, they've done some work, but we still, they're chasing some things.
It's a computer part.
It pretty much is, yes.
Yeah.
Pretty much is. And then we talk about depreciation fund, why, and on the water suicide, we have a depreciation fund in the general fund, and you should see that each one. Um, and I'll, Janet will go over the financial with you, but right now, in the general fund depreciation account, we have probably at 800,000 dollars. Uh, now, we also use that money during our slow period, and then, you know, pick it back up.
But you also have about 90 days in the cash account, correct?
Well, that's part of that.
Got, gotten about 900,000.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
You got a depreciation account.
Plus a regular cash.
Right, that's correct, yes.
That is correct. So, the thing about the, the garbage truck is just as last one we purchased for residential. We have to order it so far in the bank.
Right.
Um, and we have to write them a letter by thinking what we did the last time, saying, hey, you know, we want this, but we can't get it to build July or after, um, because we just don't sit them on the, on the ground.
Have to be built.
Yes. They have to be built from ground up, that is correct, so, um, is that something you want us to do?
You need that in motion.
Well, I just need.
Yeah, request.
To, to say that we can go ahead and send a letter.
Yes, sir.
Tell them these folks, our plan would be to purchase them.
I think.
Purchase order will be, or anything like that will be submitted.
I think the simplest way is to go up and down, vote, and, and get them.
Well, let me give you what the, what costs are today, and these are from two different companies. Um, one is the Amic equipment, which we have bought a lot of things from those folks. Their cost is 257,254 dollars. Carolina Environmental Systems, uh, the cost is for 279,000, so roughly 20,000 dollars more.
Which one we got the best service out of?
Well, we all know who bought the Amic, Carolina Amic.
We got everybody thing. That's it, the county bought their last truck.
Carolina?
Yeah.
And Amic is who we buy most of our trash trucks from.
At least Mack, you did?
One is a.
Mack truck, that's Mack?
Is a Mack, cab and chassis. And the other is a, is it Mammoth?
That's the body.
That's the body.
Oh, it's a new way body. You have to buy a chassis, didn't it?
Yeah, a new chassis. The chassis is a Mack.
Yeah.
The chassis, those are the Macks. That is correct.
You have any direction on this?
We just, you know, we really don't have a reliable spare truck, so when we go down.
No, 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 we gonna do a truck. We wanna know what, which one.
Well, I think they're pretty much the same truck, it's just a different body, and the bodies, you know, they, I, I like Dillon and Amic. I mean, that's how you just want that. They're closer, the other one's in Gringle, they're in Columbia. You have to take them to the dealer quite often, and you get electrical problems, things like that.
What kind of warranty?
One-year warranty.
Yes, that's basically it.
That's standard.
You buy, you buy that kind of equipment, they give you a warranty.
Of course, it's standard, and it's all.
Did you talk to your shop owner, they can do sleep work on that new truck, yeah?
Well, it can, it can.
It can, it can do it under warranty. You can have a lot of.
They come with extended warranty?
I don't know if it says or not, John. Um, you might, I have.
We can look and see if there's an extension, I mean, extended warranty, oh.
What's the warranty on that thing?
One year.
That's it?
Wow.
That's a lot of.
I don't even give you like, yeah.
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 You see what kind of environment that thing works in.
Yeah.
Well, that's not just the environment, I mean, again, environment, but, you know, we find, I hate to say it, we rat.
Yeah.
That's what I, we have to keep, you know, try to keep rats out of these pieces of equipment.
Well, that's common, I mean.
Yeah, because when you go dump a dumpster, you have rats in dumpsters.
They eat the wires, yeah.
I don't agree.
Yeah, I guess so.
Can you give the, uh, beat them back?
Yes. The quote right now is from Amic, 257,253,97 cents. And from Carolina Environmental is 279,300 dollars. Now, the difference in the two, I will say this, Amic is a 2021 model, and the one from Carolina Environmental is a 2022 model.
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
And that quote may change just because what Glenn said, the quote that Amic gave us is a 2021, so if we wait till July, we may not be able to get it.
May be 2022.
Yeah, midway where they got there.
And then you'll have a price.
But we'll budget at that time in our budget what that would be, because it won't be the worst. You know, that'd be our depreciation.
You start with the old.
It's gonna be cheaper.
Okay, by the.
The new one.
Yeah.
The new one. We're gonna get rid of the old one.
Back and forth.
Well, that's correct.
The backup truck is.
It's a basic jump.
Our backup truck is our original truck.
The backup truck?
It's been 16 years.
It's the 2005 backup.
All right, so it's 15. So, are we 16?
No, it's not the original.
Yeah.
I think we got the garbage.
We got 99, 98.
We had a 99 and a 2005, yeah.
98.
Yeah.
But it's, so we can just send them a letter saying, hey, put us on the list.
Yeah. I, I still think we ought to have the up and down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then is any way we can broaden our commercial revenue on dumpsters? Can we broaden our horizons on dumpsters? We got.
Oh, yeah. Can you find out if there's a scale of warranty?
I will, I will. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
I, I accept it, the.
Well, this was just to put us in the process to say, hey, put us on the list.
Yeah.
Um, when it comes to the financing or, or the actual cost, they'll send that back to us. That'll be a part of our budget process.
Yeah. And where would you get your money from, Glenn?
Well, we'll probably, and we'll just use these quotes here, we won't pay it 250-some-odd thousand straight out of our pocket.
Right.
We'll either use depreciation account, and or borrow from the bank, you know, and do a, I'm assuming a five-year loan. Um, the last truck that we bought, a garbage truck we bought, what was a year or two ago, we spent, what, 55,000 a year, uh, over five years, so roughly the same kind of cost with my member service.
Well, it's, it's those things where you, you, you need to acknowledge that you're gonna spend 55,000, 50, 55,000 dollars a year to replace that, so that is how we figure it into the budget. Now, we can either do that to ourselves in a loan, or we can do it with a bank, and they make 1% or 2%, 3% on whatever they make. Um, and that's why we want to have that depreciation fund. If we can, if we can finance ourselves and discipline ourselves to replace that.
And we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have.
We've used some depreciation money and then.
And it makes us.
Then we put money aside each year to go back in with it borrowed from ourselves.
Yeah.
Um, okay. There was discussions, and, and follow-up, Janet was also bringing up the 16th payment for the Wellness Center loan was paid, um, the end of January.
2016.
And she called, Wells Park, did we hit this with?
Oh, no.
Who was it with?
B B N T.
B B N T. Followed up about extra payment. They will not allow us to make an extra payment. Uh, we can pay it all at one time or continue our schedule of once a year. They would not allow us to make an extra payment on that. COVID, Dr. Wallace brought up some, some things on COVID. Uh, we posted some things on Facebook. I think Dillon Herald has some things on about some sites or vaccinations, where they take place. Today was one of, one of the sites here at the Wellness Center for first dose that was provided by DHEC. I wanna think, I could be wrong, was it 400 doses they did today or not?
400.
400 doses. Now, two or three weeks ago, they did a first dose here at DHEC, and they only did like less than 100.
Did they call and let us know that they had doses? See, that's what the hospital does. When they've got, when they see they're not completing their quota, they call us, and we get on the phone.
Well, I know these things today were, were about pointing on them.
Yeah.
Um, in fact, I think somebody told me that people from lower part of the state here get them.
Yeah.
So they're coming from everywhere.
Well, I'm sending all mine to Lumberton.
Yeah. They, they coming from everywhere. This, this was a first dose. A second dose is scheduled from the January 1st dose, 24th of February. Today's second dose is scheduled from March to April during DHEC out here.
Pfizer is three weeks, Moderna, the Pfizer product.
I think they do Moderna.
Moderna is four weeks.
Yeah. McLeod had reached out to me a week or two ago about scheduling dates out here, and I think they've got one date in February and one date in March. Um, now, I don't know how, if they're happening or not, they just wanted the date, so we gave two dates. Um, again, today, I mean, it was, I drove out here after lunch, and they were running through pretty quick. There's discussions that DHEC had, the DHEC person that I've talked to about our site, told me a week or so ago, they're looking at a drive-through site here. Um, and whether that happens, and they're looking at wanting to do 2, 4,000 in one day in a drive-through site, which I told them that we couldn't handle it either. So they're looking at another location they think is gonna work. Now, whether they do it or not, I don't know when that would happen. Soon as I know something, I'll let you know, but I do know you still have to go through the Carolina through DHEC. Uh, you think that DHEC's doing, I guess, um, or you can go online and look and see. I looked today, I had a gentleman in my office, wanted to know if I had any pool where he could get his shot with that.
There's no pool.
I told him, I, there was nothing I could do for him. So I pulled up the website, he said, that's useless. I said, I agree. I said, here's the telephone number. He said, you don't talk to anybody. So, I mean, we probably all heard the same stories about that. I know Carol South came out and said they were gonna start providing as well as they have. At this point in time, I don't know. The only one that is showing up on the DHEC vaccine locator slide is Dillon County Medicine. Um, but the last time I looked today, I didn't check to see for sure. Last time I looked, they were not taking me at that time, so.
Dr. Wallace, how many have y'all been to the jobs?
Really? You can't get it. You can't get it.
Why?
I have no clue. And you can't find anybody that can tell me? I, I mean, we, uh, we've been approved as a site, and, and I've got the oldest population. I mean, I don't see P telling, we got old people, and I cannot get it. I don't, I don't know.
So the thing, sometimes I worry about who I've told you about. Will you be talking to a?
Just say it. The only times I've talked to a foreign person is when they're gonna use this facility.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's pretty much.
I'm just trying to figure out the advertising, you know, just call the ramp hook with the city.
Well, I think what they've done, um, just to follow up with Dr. Wallace, if you didn't know, I have emergency, what do you call that?
Appet.
Appetet me on Tuesday, so I've kind of looped a little bit, and I do remember getting that.
Literally out of the loop.
Getting an email that Tina probably sent me, or somebody sent me, that came from Emergency Management, you know, with certain information to put out for advertising. Based on what I've seen so far, I think I should, you know, I'll say what I have to say here, and if anybody's in the book, DHEC has been very much throwing stuff out there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, again, everything's appointment phase.
Yeah.
Um, you can't call the local DHEC office and make an appointment from our own agency.
It's very confusing.
It, it very confusing.
Yeah.
Especially for the elderly.
Yeah. My appointment was not with McLeod, where I got mine. Mine was with the CDC. I mean, it's, and that's, that's part of the whole, the, the whole problem, if, if, and I, I think now, I think pretty soon the pharmacies are gonna get it, which will be real good.
Well, there, there's discussions about, you know, CBS and Walgreens.
Did Nicholas talk with the, you know, did Nicholas come and?
Yeah, he spoke to the police department.
Appreciate it.
And, yeah. Don't know if we had anybody to change their mind, but.
Well, let me just say this, if you want your life back, get vaccinated, because until we get, until we get everybody vaccinated, uh, it's, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, that was one of my biggest fears being in the hospital Tuesday, was, I hope I don't have it, I hope I don't live with it.
Right.
And I was there for a short period of time. But the more I hear on only dates and process, I try to, we try to put it out on Facebook too, and let you guys know, so, because I know you can be phone calls about, um, whether it's your family members, your neighbors, or somebody that's.
Right now, if you're under 65, it is very difficult to get a shot unless you're a heart responder, you know, the.
Heart caregiver or an elder.
Yeah. So it's a lot of.
Lot of. And then, for the, from a city standpoint, we, we've been fortunate that we haven't had a large group of people who had tested positive at one time. However, and, and with Burke, um, here in the last two to three weeks, it seems like he's had two, three, four go out. Um, I think he's got three, maybe four, is scheduled to come out this week?
Four out right now, yes, sir.
So, um, you know, it's kind of slowed down some of the process. The police department may have one, two, or three here and there on different shifts. We haven't been hurt to the point where you've had more than one-on-one shift, have you?
Well, to, to, to they get the.
Okay. So, you, we try to, to educate our people as much as possible to take precautions. Your Super Bowl was yesterday, so what did people do yesterday?
They got together.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, we won't see a spike, but I, I, I feel like we may see some spike in, in that here in next week or two, um, and then maybe it will, you know, just trend down.
I think that if we can get our population immunized, it's gone by summer. Um, but it, and the people that, you know, right now, they don't need to take it, but the people that are resisting are the very people that are gonna keep that thing alive, and they, we need to.
The Super crowd's gonna be, to tell them to do, there is one deal that, that I told the media.
It's gonna be down at the big strip by the shots and all that stuff.
If, if they walk down now, somebody roll up my sleeve, I roll up my sleeve, and I gotta think about it, I just don't know, but that's where we are on, on COVID at this point in time. Um, Benny's office had did a list in 12, 12 single-family dwellings to be demolished back in December. And we got the utilities such as Duke Energy and what I'm gonna call stuff, you know, the extra gas, if they had anything on those houses, go ahead and remove them from those unsafe structures. Uh, Burke's crowd has started on it, but had stopped since we had four out of there to test positives. But right now, we've got 12 single-family dwellings that are scheduled to be demolished right now. Of those 12, two have been completed. Hopefully, starting next week, we can get back on those. Um, we've got one listed on East Cleveland Street, there was one on South Fourth Avenue that has been completed. South Fifth Avenue, North Fifth Avenue, Mark Look 13, West Roosevelt Street, West Calhoun Street, Buford, East Street, Owen and Walnut Street are scheduled, and then there was one on West Hudson Street that has been completed. So, if someone calls you about demolition, we're in the process, and hopefully, we get our folks back to work next week to, to get that going again. Um, with that, the way that works is that to the, single-family dwelling is condemned. You know, there, there are several that are saying it's condemned, they have 60, 90 days to bring it back to code. If they don't bring it back to code, you know, we can demolish it. Um, we had. know, we can demolish it. We had in our ordinance that they can hire a outside vendor to come and do it, or they can hire us to do it. 99.9% of the time, they hire us to do it. We charge whatever the landfill cost is, and that $29, okay, $28 of tonnage that we have to pay the landfill bill account, and then we're charging 15% on top of that. Benny and I were talking last week, week before last, that maybe we need to, to increase our costs.
What's your average tonnage for that?
To tear it down?
Right.
Take two days?
Well, it depends on the size of the house, of course, but normally it's two to three days. Okay. How many employees do you have there?
Well, normally it takes about three.
Three employees, 20 an hour, you know, you got.
Well, you got these.
Two pieces of heavy equipment.
Well, I know, just start with that, 24 and 20, but, you know, you got.
We're lucky we're breaking even.
You got, you got easily a thousand bucks in your, in your labor. Well, my thoughts and Benny's thoughts were, again, it's just like anything else that we do. I wouldn't say 50%. I don't know the number, how many are outstanding. But, you know, after so many months, if they don't pay us, we turn it back over, it's leaning on the taxes. And, and we get it back that way. Truthfully, heartily says, we need to get out of that business, or maybe where they will go out and get somebody else to do it.
Yeah, we need to have some control over that, because if they run into a problem, then they're going to quit company and do a demolition, and then we're.
Oh, if they don't pay them, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah. Agreed.
But they don't have the recourse to go after their taxes. We do.
So, again, I think 15% is, is pretty cheap.
Yeah. Well, there's a reason why they choose this.
Yeah, it is.
But I would look at that cost.
Or just increase it.
Well, that's.
Well, I look at that cost and, and, you know, I mean, we don't need to make a lot of money, but we certainly don't need to lose money. My thoughts were, whatever the landfill cost, plus 50% of that.
Yeah. Well, in a, you know, most of the time, your materials are half of your total cost, your labor cost is about your materials cost if you go build something. So, I think you're, you're easily there, but you also, like I say, you have the cost of heavy equipment, tires, and stuff like that.
I think we can do a flat fee, just say a thousand dollar fee or something.
What about outside contractor? What, where's this, you just like, what are they talking about?
That's good.
So you're saying instead of 15?
It's going to be more than, way more than what we're going for.
Well, that's why.
Most times, you got escalators running, it's a hundred dollars an hour. Most times you're in an escalator, you hire somebody, it's at least a hundred and two dollars an hour.
For the escalator.
Yeah. You run an escalator for two days at least.
Yeah, you're going to burn 60, 70 gallons of fuel. You get a flat tire in the lane of fuel and the custom tires, 300 and some bucks.
Yeah.
So you, you know, it's.
So you're talking about just the person running the escalator and excavator and, and then his.
I mean, like.
Half the 1600.
We tore down $3,500, what the normal on Fourth Avenue, and we made $500.
Yeah.
So, we really lost money.
So right now, you're at 15%.
Right now.
So if it's 1,000, you're at, you're 11,500 on the term, and you're proposing 50% of the landfill charge.
I think.
So if you're 1,000, you're at 1,500. I think that's a good mark.
And that's still a deal.
I think it'd be.
And again, a lot of times, we have to haul dirt back into the house and dig it out. You got.
Wouldn't it be better to control the landfill cost, or is that a problem? Because if you kept it 1,000, you got 5,000 then.
Well, I won't count it.
I just do 50% of the landfill cost.
Because, you know, some of them.
Are your cost.
I don't know that vast majority of Burton knows it. You know, it's not a lot of tonnage when you're talking about a wooden house.
Most, our average house a week here now, I would say is around $2,500. Because most of them are shotgun type houses. You know, that's, that's probably the average. Every now, when you run into one like we did the other day, there was a block house that, you know, weighed, weighed about 120 tons. But.
Won't you make it a minimum of 1,000 and 50% above? No less than 1,000.
Oh, you just say whatever landfill cost, plus 50%?
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, they just do.
Look at, look at.
And cover yourself easily.
Let's do this. On that, if you say, how much, how much did you spend on that last one? You said 25?
It was 120 tons. It was about $3,500.
3,000.
3,000. It's 3,500, about 500.
And it took how many days?
It took about three days.
Three days, so you're talking about, you're talking $2,400. You're talking about basically like $800 a day for just the excavator and the guy running it. But you've got two other people.
Right.
I mean, we don't need to lose money, don't we?
Well, I kind of like, Glenn, I like 50% of the.
You think 50% will get us close?
Yes, sir.
Well, I.
That's why I wouldn't pay y'all.
What do we have in place as far as when a house burns, that the homeowner has to clean up the property, like within 90 days? If they don't, can we not start filing?
Well, that goes back to, to, at that point in time, it's condemned. And then it's whatever that condemned process is.
Wouldn't you say two years is really?
Yeah, too long, yeah. Too long, too long. And a lot of that problem is reaching out, making sure, and Jack probably answered better than I, the, you know, who we send notifications to multiple, because it can be multiple, and then advertising and things like that.
And maybe eating a mortgage off.
Yeah.
But there's got to be some kind of timeframe there, though.
It is. And we, we're stretching, we're stretching too far, I think. I agree with you there. But Benny and I also have looked at some ordinance from other towns, and I'll tell you who's put me on this one. Mayor Blenke, Matthew Belton and I have been talking. He found something and shared it with me, that there's some things that other people are doing on abandoning or condemning properties, that we're looking to see something, some of the things that we may be able to adopt as well to kind of tighten up per se.
Do we need to go back and look at our ordinance that we have in place now?
Yeah. That's what we're working on. Then it goes for full planning on it. And then it'll come to you guys. But, yeah, those need to tighten up and make it quicker. And then on the other side of that, we try to do demolition this time of year, because it's slower stuff than what Burton has got going on. This is the slow time of the year, but we try to do those during the winter months to get that done.
But it almost seems like at 3,500 to 1,750, and you got 802 days, and Stitch is basically breaking even at 50%. Aren't you just breaking even at 50%?
It's kind of like we always talk about, we're trying to make the community better too. You know, we want, we want to get it done, but we don't want to lose money.
But shouldn't you have a minimum on the back end? No less than 1,000?
Yes.
Because if you don't, that's the opposite. Well, another thing is, are we still on that one house, one block, one year?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we, again, we can do something different there if we pay the money to have asbestos studies in them. Again, I didn't bring it with me. I don't do it at that cost. But if there is asbestos, we can't get that. Because we're not, if we get a study on it, because we're not certified. So, we kind of follow DHEC's lead with DHEC. As long as we do one per block per year.
They will miss, yeah.
All right.
Did anybody make a motion?
No, I will, we'll bring that back. That was just for information only. I think that's what I have right this morning.
Okay. Ken, I need.
Can I ask a quick question as far as this item for that wastewater treatment? Was that an unexpected cost cost?
Yes, yes.
Do it.
General fund, we've got 1,775,669 in the general fund operating and depreciation account. Our revenues today were 3 million, 111,767 in 2021. In 1920, it was 2,000, 2 million, 794,998, which is a difference of 316,769 more in 2021.
On the talks last time, if money came in in July.
It is. It's our local auction, money and taxes and stuff.
It was about where we were last.
Right. And then the expenses was 3 million, 692,179 in 2021. And then in '20, it was 3 million, 815,708. That's 133,520 more in 2020 than in the current. Order and sewer, we have 1 million, 548,476 in non-restricted funds. In restricted funds, we have 2 million, 81,742 in restricted, which brings a total to 3 million, 630,218. In our revenues versus 2021 and '20, we were, we were 27,092 more last year than we are in our current.
Just a note, in talking with Purdue today, they said that they were still operating at about 85%. They, and a lot of it hits cut and demand because of restaurants, but also ability to keep people, you know, on the job.
Our expenses was 2 million, 187,545 in our current year. In '20, it was 2 million, 280,404, which is a difference of 92,939 more in '20 than it is in current. That is due to some repairs on pumps and equipment in last, the last, right, as Grisna was calling me. Store and water, our cash account's 57,702. Our revenues for '21 is 85,399. In '20, it was 81,732, a difference of 3,667, more in '21 than in '20. Our expenses in '21 is 189, 189,230. And in '20, it was 70,76, a difference of 119,184. Some of that is the engineering cost on that stammer litigation.
Corn whirs.
Yeah.
Corn whirs.
Store and water.
That was.
That will be.
Well, we haven't gotten reimbursed yet.
No. Our local was 60,000, and federal was 180,000.
Yeah. And we, we've been, we've been awarded, we're waiting on to be awarded the 60,000 match that had not awarded that in the other.
The golf course, our cash account's 9,392. Our revenues for '21 is 147,279. In '20, it was 101,170, which is 46,109 more in '21 than it was in 2020. We've transferred 75,000 today in our, in our current year, which last year this time, we had transferred 105,000. Our expenses in the current '21 is 260,317. In the '20, it was 215,108, 45,209 more in our current year, '21, and that's due to all the set out laws.
That cost was 36,000.
More than the prison cost, yeah.
Would that cost like 36,000, about 20, and then the cost of that, that 700?
Glenn, at the Wellness Center, you still got Tyler, the Wellness Center?
I can't remember if he's there or.
Wellness.
Wellness. So DHEC to the golf.
Okay. And then, in our 2% occupancy funds, we have 940,000 and $10 in there. And that's due, we just made a payment of 239,474 in January, towards the end of January, which that's what Glenn said, that list is four years old, and we had it completed. Our revenues 375,143. In '21, it was 355,528. In '20, which were of difference of 19,615. Our average monthly revenue is about 53,500.
Follow up with that. I've had conversations, Benny's had conversations with Baxter. They're looking to start doing some renovations, so hopefully by this summer, they'll be either open or doing renovations. They're not tearing the building down, they're just going to redo the building is what they're focused. So that's, and they're one of our biggest producing as far as hospitality tax goes. They've been closed now six months.
And we make 20,000 more.
Yeah.
I wonder how Starbucks has stood in the hall affected that if.
I'll have a cup of coffee.
All right.
Ted.
Thank you.
Don Strickland from PD Regional Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Dr..
Can I share a?
Yes, yes.
You got something you don't have that?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor, allowing me to come and give you an update on kind of where we're at. Spoke to you a few times this past year, just about the plans and kind of what we're facing, and what we had moving forward with. This is the schedule that, most current schedule kind of talks about the services that we've had. We actually have already added additional services for Harbor Freight, probably a couple of weeks ago, and there's some more growth coming in the very near future. This is kind of where we're at now. So I'm just going to run through a quick list and give you an idea. But we're just, just over four months now, but we've had 3,250 trips just in the city of Dillon since we started. And keep in mind that all of this is during COVID. We've, across the board in all six counties, we're seeing about, we've had about a 40% reduction in ridership. So we're operating about 60%. So this number would be much bigger than it already is. And I think it's not bad based on where we're at and just getting started, you know, in the middle of COVID. But, so 3,250 trips just in the city of Dillon. We've had growth in all services in four or five months. But February, just that first week, is actually looking better. And a lot of that's got to do with something else I'll share in just a minute. But had 128 trips in Hamer, 50 trips coming toward, to Dillon from Little Rock, 59 trips from Latta on our connect service. And all those, that's Monday through Friday, is on the schedule here. One of the biggest things that's starting to take off now is demand response, and we're seeing a lot more of this. But that's going to their house. Picking them up basically from the front door and taking to appointments. And we've had 182 of those, just as we started a few months ago. And that's really going to increase, and that's something we have to budget for, because it's a more expensive type of service. But what we're finding is a lot of the folks are seniors, a lot of them, they can't get to a bus stop. So we have to provide a service to go to the, go to a house and get them. A lot of those are McLeod and Care South. They're going to appointments. Some of them are going to buy groceries, but we don't have an option but to go get them. That's part of our requirement is anywhere we provide, picture our service, we have to go to those that can't get on the bus on the normal route. So we go pick those folks up. I really see that kind of increasing and taking off in the coming months, especially, you know, more people are vaccinated, the better the numbers are. People are going to feel more comfortable getting out, and I think that's what we'll see. I mentioned the Harbor Freight piece we just started, that we're focusing, starting out just in Dillon County. The plan there, and what Harbor Freight wants is us for it to be able to connect to Florence. They have more and more folks, and we have folks calling from Florence trying to get to Harbor Freight, Marion County to Harbor Freight, and Marlborough County to Harbor Freight. And all of that, we have plans to roll into place this year. And the need is growing. Dr. Wallace, you mentioned Wyman and Purdue. It sounds like I need to visit those folks again. We haven't really talked to them in a while. Harbor Freight came to the table as a local supporter, so we're going to focus more on them. But I will speak with Wyman and Purdue this week to see what we can do to. with Wyman and Purdue this week to see if what we can do to help them now. Um, I did talk to a few folks at Purdue, there's an event coming up pretty soon, a job fair. So we're gonna be a part of that and see if we can get some more folks to work. One other thing I wanted to share is, uh, we mentioned the COVID shots. We have partnered with, um, the Care Staff, the Care First Foundation, and, um, we're transporting folks to go get vaccines. I think Care South did four hundred or eight hundred last Wednesday and Friday in Lada. And I think they're gonna be back there this week, I believe it's Wednesday and Friday. And folks from Dillon, we're bringing folks from Dillon to Lada to get them vaccinated. So that's been, been good. Uh, we had one situation where wheelchair lift, uh, wasn't operate properly, so we had to manually deploy that, which luckily Mr. McCoy, he's been driving for us for twenty-two years, I believe, he was able to take care of that issue without a problem. Um, so things are certainly heading in the right direction. We have a lot of, um, additional growth needed. The city itself is seeing, to be honest, probably eighty percent of the ridership. A lot of folks are coming from the rural areas into Dillon to do things. And, um, as I mentioned last year, we came to council and basically requested about, I think it was ten thousand dollars in operating funds to help us, um, this service, where we're sitting right now is between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand miles a year. And, um, we were looking for ten thousand local commitment and then two thousand for bus stop placement. Um, I shared that around six months, we start looking at actually permanently putting in bus stops. So it won't be too long before we are, you know, trying to go through the design review board and and looking at bus stop locations and kind of where it's needed and where the ridership is. Um, obviously, as I shared before, Walmart's a big part of this, having been able to work that out to get them to be a local supporter. But in my opinion, they should be, if they can be. Uh, we're looking to go through a distribution center to see if we can maybe work something out on that end because the local stores are sometimes difficult. But, um, I'm just, you know, here to give an update, answer any questions, and I hope that the city will consider, um, being, you know, a partner and local stakeholder in this thing. I know that from many conversations, I do get that question, you know, kind of giving us a rundown of who's currently supporting the service. And, um, I just hope that that's something we can, we can work through and look to continue growing what we're doing. Answer any questions.
Mr. Strickland, when you were here the last time, you said you were gonna go out and try to secure some with our own. Were you able to do that? Do you have the money value of what you?
Well, we're still, we're still short. We've got about twelve stakeholders now for the service. Um, as far as we're, what we're currently running, the funds are there, um, but, um, you know, with the growth, additional demand response that I'm talking about, the folks needing to come to Dillon, whether it's McLeod or, or Care South, wherever, those, that's the service that kind of is expensive. So for us to be able to, be able to continue growing that and bring those folks to their appointments, um, the cost is moving more. And, you know, the goal is for us to be able to continue supporting it. We have a lot of supporters in McLeod Hospital, Trinity Bahagel, Care South, Dillon County, Harbor Freight. Um, there's quite a few.
When you say permanent markers, like in Florence, you got permanent, I guess, is that what you call permanent markers?
Yes, sir.
There's many of the stops there.
Yeah.
Because there's some of the stops you got on this map that we don't have a D-CAT sign on.
Yeah, the problem with that is, we start out with, uh, y'all all know what the politician type signs look like, so we start out with. And the problem is, is anytime somebody comes to our address, those things, they get replaced. And we try to go out and replace them, we don't have nearly enough. We probably spent, uh, close to a thousand dollars putting those things out. So a lot of folks, they see the route, they downloaded the app that we have, so they can kind of know where the bus runs. But, um, the bus stops is really one thing that makes a big difference because it's something they can visually see. And on the bus stop itself, it has that information you're looking at. So it'll actually say, there'll be a point, like it may be point seventeen, they know exactly what time the bus will be there. So if they don't have a smartphone, that's an option for them.
How would, um, somebody that can't get out, like you said, you had one going about that, I would pick them up. They would, they would get it to you, y'all would?
Yes, sir, so on there, it talks about demand response. They call us, um, before six PM today. If you have a nine o'clock appointment tomorrow morning, we're gonna take care of it. So you just, it's typically.
Because right now it's three days for them.
Yeah, Medicaid, yes, sir. If there were logistic care and they're not feeling well and they want to go to the doctor today, they'll get there Thursday. And that, this is a service that, I said we had a hundred and eighty-two, as much as has been in the past two months, as people are starting to learn about it. So I think that's gonna continue to grow. And most of those are senior citizens and working with Vantage Point, which is a part of Care South, um, with that program. But, um, you know, this, this is not, it's something that's gonna continually be tweaked and grow. And, uh, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, we kind of pull in the right stakeholders to be able to make sure we can sustain it. For what we're going through, what we're facing with the COVID situation, um, I'm not disappointed on where we're at. I know that we'd probably be looking closer to ten thousand trips right now if it wasn't for COVID. Um, after the new year, we saw a slight drop because of, you know, people knew that with the holidays, there there are more risks to get out there and use the service. But the Federal Transit Administration has pushed down a mandatory mask requirement. So we're giving away masks to any passengers that's on the bus that don't have one, we actually provide them a mask. And then we're requiring, requiring everybody on the bus to wear a mask.
That's good.
We have a product called Vital Oxide that we're disinfecting. It's basically a source like a fogger, but we disinfect every bus, um, in our entire system and administration. That's an expensive undertaking, but luckily we have some federal funds to help us out with that. It's a medical grade, it's actually a food grade, um, certified product that we're able to use. And you don't have to wait a long time before you can get back on the bus.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Only thing I wanted to say was to please, if that's okay, um, we work with police departments in other, other areas. One thing that, that we do have on our entire fleet is six to eight cameras that has audio and video. So at any point you come across something, you think a bus camera may be able to help you, it's probably, we might need to add that video.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And I understand, we didn't do it.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
We've been doing ten over three years for somebody like.
Of course, I thought we were gonna find.
We didn't, I think I wanted to kind of wait and see what it was gonna do and. Well, this, this is a, I think it's a great thing to see them all the time and, uh, um, certainly we're in a underserved area that people, I mean, they, it's sad when you have to pay a family member to drive you somewhere and it is cheap. Um.
What did you say the county did? Do you remember what it did?
They're doing thirty-six thousand a year.
Over three years, wasn't it?
It's a three-year commitment, thirty-six thousand a year, so a hundred and eighty thousand.
And we were gonna do roughly thirty-three or thirty-six thousand over that same time period, I think, fourteen, fifteen years.
Yes, it was actually just, um, thirty-two, because it had been ten thousand for three years, and we were just asking for two thousand to help with the bus stop.
We need to make sure we put that entire discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate it, sir.
Um, citizens report, anybody wanna talk?
Um, I'd just like to say that on behalf of DCA, Dillon Community Alliance, we're planning to start up our first Fridays at the Fountain again, starting in May. We will have the concert and we're gonna, um, try to get some food vendors, food trucks, just in that little area there. Um, we've decided, I think they had previously been like six to eight, but some people have said, one, we can't get the outside traffic in here at six, if people work jobs, you know, they can't get here by six o'clock. So that's the whole point of this, we want to encourage people to come from outside of the city as well. Um, so we decided to do it from seven to nine. And the laundry gets in the summer, it's really hot at six o'clock. So that's why we decided seven to nine. But I can tell you, I'm not gonna tell you who it is, but we already have one great band lined up for June. So, um, we're, we're working on that and, um, hopefully it will be at least as successful as it has been in the past, barring whatever COVID is gonna do.
Hopefully we plan on that. Anyone else? Um, old business ordinance number twenty-one dash zero one, annexation of Robert D. Miller property, seventeen twenty-seven, Lila Court. Um, this is second reading and then can we just tie in seventeen thirty-one, Lila Court is, is one, but?
Twenty-one oh two?
Yes, correct.
All by the same.
Same person. Any other motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll say it.
All those in favor? Uh, new business ordinance number twenty-one dash oh three, annexation of East Coast Housing, King Property, Southeast Intersection Highway three oh one South.
This is, and outside, three oh one South, going towards Lada, that cross from, um, will pass the parking motor vehicles on the left. One, the first one goes to the left, we're already in the city, Motor Home Park. This is a newer one that's being redone.
Outside of Dillon's?
Yes, sir. Somehow, another year ago, the city was annexed out there, so I'm sorry, that was prior to my time. But the Motor Home Park, the one that's in the city now, and then this one is gonna be located right inside there, they like being annexed.
Can we ask a discussion on this? Jared? Um, I'd like to bring in on this, this, um, discussion today. Um, this is a, a Motor Home Park that's gonna probably end up putting migrants and stuff like that, you know. Um, there's about ten or twelve trailers out there right now. And my question is, is play out from the outside the city now? Um, I just want to get your perspective, how you feel about it. You get a lot of calls out there?
We get a fair amount of calls at the other Motor Home Park, because we're already serviced and the other Motor Home Park. I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't get one every day, but, I mean, they'll probably end up, they're probably gonna leave.
So the police, do they go out two at a time to go out there, just one and something, have it off the back of? It's a mile and a half, two miles out the city limits? Um, you know, I just want to get your take on how you feel about it, if you think it should be annexed, you see it.
Well, I don't know. I don't live that I have a dog and fight, I finally. I mean.
I don't think it's perfectly good thing they annexed it.
It looks like it's gonna be kind of, I mean.
It ain't removed, it's all.
Yeah, all the brand new trailers, and I'm hoping it's gonna be something nice and hopefully we won't have to go out there, but I'm deciding to annex it.
But the same folks, they're doing that trailer park, doing the one, I did by, behind Dillon Yawn.
Behind Dillon Yawn, yeah.
Yeah, those, those are kind of, and that, they, they've been good money to do like this, so there's ain't anybody that would do like that.
Yeah, the one that they've done, like you said, what we used to call sell the trailer park. They took out all those, put in brand new Motor Homes. Uh, that one, that one supposedly be something similar to this one, eighteen units?
Eighteen, and they're already have ones already taken.
So how does the city make any, I mean, I know they're gonna provide it for you if you voted in, you know.
Well, they get, they get lower.
How much taxes you get off that?
Whatever, that I can ask.
Right.
Again.
What's on the other side of it? Uh, they build a new building out there or?
They build a roofing building.
It's not across from, the old Thomas break, it's out there.
It's like trailer park out there, yeah.
But as far as mountain taxes, I don't have a clue what that is.
Eight, ten units?
I mean, I mean, you look at, and I'll use my home for as an example. My taxes this past year, six hundred dollars, including the city family and school. The city portion is probably two hundred bucks.
I just think you can. Any other discussion? I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. I second. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm playing fantastic.
And that's the first reading, by the way. I have a little more information about it. Um, all right. Jay?
Councilor's report.
Oh, I'd like to start off, uh, follow up what you said, Dr. Wallace. I'd like to commend Sheriff Renee, um, on several drug buses had throughout the county. And I want to follow up with this. Um, on September the sixth, I had the opportunity to meet with Glenn, Jack, David, and Keith and Corin. And, um, at that time, we talked about the motel that I've been speaking about the last weeks. Um, about a week, two weeks later, Glenn told me he had mentioned the ship, the solicitor. And tonight, you have any information five months later than that? None. So if the county can do it, put a new sheriff, everything, I know we can talk at the end and get some of them.
If you're willing to respond, I'm glad, I tell you, I'm, I meet with the sheriff, um, two to three times a week. And what we have both realized is that we, we do not have the resources by ourselves to, to do what we need to do. I have assigned two people to that asphalt unit. They've been working with three people that the sheriff has. And everything that, that the sheriff has done, our folks have been there too. We've got, uh, problems that we're working on in the city. And that was one of the big things that me and sheriff talked about. We don't wanna go, we don't wanna put the folks on the asphalt and they spend all the time in the county. So we've got numerous targets here in the city, and that's one of them. And, uh, we're actively working on it and we're actively working with the sheriff on this thing.
Um, just to follow, we had an overdose data, um, in the county, we had the vote table on next one eighty-one Saturday. So it just goes to show you that it's an eyesore in our community, not only here, but also in our neighborhood.
And wearing all that special lace to it.
The day it happened, the sale getting busted, I had three or four people calling me. And that's the first thing I asked is, you know, what can we do about the new table? Because they know what's going on. So I appreciate, you know, trying to work with Renee, you know, getting something done on that, you know, um, and that's all I got. Okay, thank you.
I think you'll see, hopefully, we'll see some things that we've been trying to get done, get them COVID. It seems like we've got a good relationship working.
Well, one more thing, while you're talking about that, um, I would like to see us get our canine in the back story.
Well, we're working on that.
I had a lady, they've got a, a dog that was donated to them. So, I mean, the city of Dillon needs to have that.
And we, we talked about that, we just gotta find the person that wants to do that. And in fact, I think Steph and my friend, did y'all, did they line help us with the grant for that?
Yes, we did.
Well, we don't necessarily have to wait for a grant, but, you know, we, we got the money and the budget to go ahead and pursue that. And I hope that we will soon. That's all I have, Dr. Wallace.
Okay, Jay?
I've got a few things, uh, on the positive note. Um, I was happy to see the wellness center on the, I guess, the daily users.
Oh, yeah.
Were about, well, about fifteen percent.
Daily users have been.
And you drink when I.
Yeah, daily users have been outstanding and, I mean, come in and, you saw as much basketball. Because there hasn't been a lot of revenue generated from rentals that we use with the, those of that. The daily users was, what, eighty-five percent?
Eighty-five percent.
Yeah.
On the other hand, um, and reiterate what, um, Captain Wallace said. On the golf course, you have nine areas that were at the neighborhood of eighty-five to three hundred and eighty percent. And that's, that's pretty impressive, what kind of extra revenue that we put in on.
I can tell you, and I looked at it last week, started this with it. And just looking at, I keep a monthly code since the day we started, of what our revenue is for each month. From two thousand sixteen, and this is a calendar year, by the way, from two thousand sixteen through the end of December twenty twenty. Two thousand sixteen, we were averaging fourteen thousand dollars a month in revenue. Uh, and that's, that's not counting the county's donation, by the way. That's just what we bring in as far as play as. In two thousand sixteen, we were averaging four thousand, fourteen thousand dollars a month. Two thousand twenty, we're averaging right at twenty thousand dollars a month. Um, we saw a big shift, begin with COVID, to be honest with you. But also saw, we made some, there were some changes made with golf course and things are running, um, smoother and I think that helps a lot, but I. I think that's helped a lot, but I think COVID was, that was one of the things that people were allowed to do. And it's caught on, we had a good number of outside users. When I say outside users, people out of Carolina, Marwood County, Marion County, Chesterfield County coming and using our golf course, and that's a good thing. Could we do better? Sure we could, but this is the best twelve months that we've ever had of twenty twenty, the whole month, the whole year of twenty twenty, the best, let's say the twelve months.
Those things I have. On code enforcement, Janet, I was looking at that apartment eighteen, and I noticed, now you had, I think you had mentioned before, publications and legal ads. What causes us to be so far above budget in that area?
Because you never know what you're gonna advertise, what comes up.
Okay.
Condemned properties being learned, having to have and having to put that in newspapers, pretty much if I'm not mistaken, or.
The, the wellness center, do we have to do some extensive work in the telephones in the wellness center?
I hear the latest.
Because we had the budget at ten thousand, we're sixteen and a half.
And I do not have a chance to that.
I'll have to look in the lab.
I think we're gonna need to do this year as far as give repairs.
And the other question I had, a word to sue of Department forty-six, that you had contractual AMV cloud.
AMV is cloud, that's pay online.
I got you.
Yeah, that's.
The only question I had, I just didn't understand all of that.
If you look in some of our expenses over there as well, I think I noticed the day it cost us, have we spent twelve or fifteen thousand in accepting debit cards without charging a fee?
Yeah.
And that's what we had to pay the bank, so, I mean, there's costs of doing that that we don't turn back over to the user.
Now, the, the new F twenty L T drive assembly that we had to replace, where was that located at, Harvey?
That's at the back clarifier, it's nineteen seventy model four.
Explain to them what a clarifier is.
That's where you separate the solids and lets the clear water come off the top, so it can be stored, and the arm continues to stay, and the gearbox went out, and the bottom part burned.
All right, that's all I got. No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Both?
Glenn, do the highway department, nobody probably knows right now, in the ditch over there, where the mailman runs it all the time, he digs his pocket hole around the side of the road.
We're going through now, if it ever stops raining, help it, if, you know, hopefully it dry out and try to fix some of those things. I gave one bird today, yeah, I don't think it was, I think I was on Carolina Avenue, the one I gave you.
Did Howard, did Howard, did Howard?
You gotta call him.
You gotta call him.
Yeah.
He, I appreciate the work you've done over there in the, in the apartment down there one, and they say it's got some trouble, so we walk, and I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Don't they, Glenn, have you ever looked into getting a lot down here at Commerce and where everyone?
Not in the city.
It's not in the city, okay, yeah. I just noticed it was very hard when I was coming down, it's like.
I mean, we can do it, I mean, but it's just not easy. Yeah. I just wonder, I mean, we could, I mean.
Really, right there, as far as, if we can locate that road, maybe look into that.
Come down, direct to Wolf Park. Yeah. Yeah. But we can, I mean, again, it's not in the city, if you want to spend, I don't remember what the cost is for a strip line, maybe?
Fifteen dollars a month, or something like that.
It's not a lot, but it's not this.
Yeah. That's all I got.
You good? Is there any way we can get grant money to run from where you finished that project on Martha McCain up to Main Street?
Yeah, we're talking about lighting?
Yeah, so we were.
The only thing about the light, the only thing about the light, the grant didn't pay for that, did it? The lighting, because we had to come out of pocket, hundred and fifty something dollars.
Eighty-nine thousand.
Was that a part of?
I think that was part of it.
There was, we had to own it. They wouldn't let Duke own those, those light fixtures.
So you had to literally buy the light fixtures?
Yes.
Radio.
Yeah.
But everything else brought up to the line, the wiring, all that is included in the project?
Yes.
Could you bring something to us to show what it would do to continue that sidewalk and lighting up to Main Street? So it really looks good, but it's kind of dark until you get down to that point, and then it's really light.
And you got, yeah, we can give them a look to see what it was entail. Now, many years ago, probably twenty years ago, we ran sidewalks from J B Martin to Jackson Street.
Right.
On, on the left side going out.
Right.
And then Scott Theater.
Directly across the road.
Yeah, and then go across the road to get the other portion. It may be well to look at, and we don't have to get grant to do this, to get Duke, the walkway we have in place now, from J B Martin to Jackson Street, see if they would put in lights.
LED lighting there. Yeah, that'd be nice.
And they told me that that, we don't want to own, but under that grant, they put on a dump where it was, but you already got sidewalks there, just add lights to that side of the street.
Yeah.
And see what that costs you, but we'll find that out. And then maybe take it not only to J B Martin, and do it in favor, and take it up to Main Street.
Yeah. Especially if they're gonna do all that renovation.
Yeah, we, the side plans, they had submitted side plans, I think Burton Hardy had looked at them last week or a week before, so that project is starting to roll. I told you last month that there were discussions that they wanted to have with council, Jack has talked with Derek Pernille, I think they're gonna present something next month, J B Martin's.
He didn't say when, he said he could get it drawn up. We're gonna have to post in the general.
Yeah, it's just to do, get Florence Housing Authority, let them be the lead on this, it won't cost the city anything.
We don't have a housing authority, Florence has agreed, we do, and, and I told him our main concern was the liability on the city, and he said that would not be a price.
And I've had a few people to mention, if we could in the future, to have a project on First Avenue.
Cover those ditches.
Yeah, they have, and the lighting down from food line to sidewalk, all the way. It's straight shot.
The only issue, the only issue with that one is, and they looked at that, it's a big canal.
Yeah.
You know, we spoke many times before about canals and piles, open canal holds more water than, than piles of the, and that's where the sidewalk would be, would be above those canals.
I've never seen those canals full.
Oh, I have.
Really?
Yes.
Y'all, that water bottle, that's up in their food line. They, when they're doing this research, make sure they put a lot of emphasis at the end of that First Avenue there, food line, and see what we can do in that area to alleviate water pressure on our water run. And maybe there's something we can do with those ditches. We could burn it another way.
Well, that, all that water comes down to.
First Avenue is a mess.
To old furniture store, warehouse, I mean, Dillon veneer. Yeah, passed it to the old, what was that? What are your competitors?
Competitors?
Hardware store, and then cuts into the side yet, and goes up onto three oh one to Elizabeth Lane to Con, that's where all that water goes, that's where it's laid.
Oh, it's my competitor.
That was before his time.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I make the motion.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Thank y'all.